Welcome, I'm glad we have so many people here, this is great. I'm calling to order the city council meeting, it's April tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. We have three, four, we have five council members present, one will be here any second now. Councilmember Shelton will be excused for this evening, we're also joined by the mayor and a lot of administrative staff and the council staff as well. So, welcome, one and all, and several visitors, we appreciate that. And there's councilmember Bedore has arrived as well, so we're going to start with the pledge of allegiance which will be led this evening by Deputy Chief Robertson from the Police Department, come on down, or.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, please be seated.
Thank you, Chief. The, uh, the next item on the agenda is our public comment period. Now, several of you may be here because you received a notice in the mail for a public hearing about Pearson Farms. If you did, that public hearing was sent out, that notice was sent out in error, we're having that public hearing in two weeks at our next council meeting, however, we'll still be happy to hear from you right now during our public comment period, so we're not gonna make you come back, just know that we're not actually gonna be discussing it this evening, that's gonna be in two weeks. Um, and you'll probably get another notice in the mail, apologize for that administrative error there. So if you're in the room, you're welcome to come up to the microphone, we give you three minutes, uh, this is not really a back and forth thing, please, I mean, if you have questions and stuff, go ahead and ask them, but we probably won't know the answer right off the top of our head, but our staff will get back to you um, with an answer, so we ask you to give us your name and, you know, if you're a West Jordan resident, that's always helpful to know. Yeah, and we just asked for just a bit of decorum, and that's a, that's about it, so, um, if you're in the room, go ahead and come on up, if you're online, uh, on the Zoom call, raise your hand, and by telephone, that's a star nine, if you're planning on joining us by telephone. Technology is great, so if you're in the room, come on up, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing period.
It's me first.
Make sure you give us your name.
Uh, I grew up in Holiday, we've owned land in West Jordan for, since the sixties, and actually I live in, uh, West George, or actually Draper at the moment. The reason I came tonight was to educate and hopefully, uh, show you either the good, the bad of your department. On, uh, February twelfth, I was driving home on I fifteen, and I observed a really nice SUV driving past me. If you all wanna see. It's a K nine unit. Apparently, the driver of that unit was Sergeant, uh, Mike Davis from the West Door Department, he is a K nine unit, actually, here's a better picture of it. You'll see he's in the HOV lane, which is not allowed. So, I called up the duty chief that was working that day, and apparently, uh, I got transferred later in the day to, uh, Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis, if I can pull this right, oh, I'm sorry, Mike Jones, it was Mike Jones, I'm sorry, it was Mike Jones that was actually driving the vehicle that day. I was actually transferred to, uh, Mike Jones, and I told him what happened and everything else, and if you actually see, there's actually a number on the vehicle of your Western vehicles. So it's actually pretty simple to actually see that. Now, uh, Mike Jones, if you'll notice, is a sergeant, we all recognize it, we've all been there, at least some of us have been. So let me read you the transcripts of what kinda happened from the report. This is from your Chief of Police, Mike Valentine, to Mike Jones, it says, Dear Sergeant Jones, this letter to inform you of my determination, disciplined decision following the receipt investigation of a citizen complaint filed against you. One me. I find that you improperly responded to a personal complaint, you were notified of a complaint about a K nine officer, you called the complaint and realized you were the subject of the complaint, you did not notify you, I'm sorry, you did not notify the complaining person that you were the involved officer, you reported the incident to your immediate supervisor, Lieutenant Jenkins, who was the watch compander on duty and filling in for Lieutenant, oh, why, he was out, you told Lieutenant Jenkins that the complaint did not want any further action and needed, and didn't, and no action was needed. Days later, the complainant, me, contacted the police department, again, was upset that he did not receive a follow-up claim, and that he would not receive a follow-up claim. If you know or suspect you may be the subject of a complaint, that complaint should be immediately referred to your supervisor, anyway. Um, with six minutes left, he has sped multiple times.
Oh, sorry, that's okay, you're, I'll, I'll give you thirty seconds, if you wanna sum up, that would be great.
So, Officer Mike Jones is a sergeant. He's in your department, he's representing y'all. Okay, he sped multiple times in the HOV lane, he's putting citizens at risk, and all this goes done, nothing was done to Mr. Jones. Everything that the chief has done was all done by email, as I understand it, nothing was done in person. And, uh, you know what, when Mike Jones is making a hundred fifty-two thousand dollars a year, and the chief is making three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars a year.
They, they wish, all right, thank you, um, for that information. Uh, we do have, I didn't realize I had a stack of signed up people, but you are on the list, so you are good to go, we'll go next to Jennifer Sorenson. If you'd like to come up and, and address the council.
Sure, uh, my name is Jen Sorenson, I live on nineteen fifty west, just off of Sugar Factory, the very second to last home before the Pearson Farms property. Our biggest concern is the traffic, I, I need the council to understand the traffic. Um, the way that the, the lots are planned out right now is making nineteen fifty a through street from Sugar Factory to Gardener Lane. And I guarantee you, nobody wants, you know, they're gonna make nineteen fifty a through street, nobody's gonna go on Twenty Second West because they're gonna avoid the tracks arms, they're going to avoid the, the stop signs at Twenty Second West and uh, Sugar Factory, the school zone, Gardner Village and the, and the stop sign there, I don't know if you have the maps up, but I have to tell you, um, there are a lot of people here who are very frustrated. The first meeting that was held last month, there were four of us who received notification of that meeting. Four homes in that entire subdivision. The house next to Pearson's Prop Farms, mine, the house next to me, and the house across the street, that's it. So I was very appalled when there were only two families that showed up last time at the meeting. These four same families received notification of a meeting that was to be held February tenth, two weeks ago. Um, my mom lives with me, she called the next morning, hey, this says February tenth, where, or what's going on? She was told by the city, it is actually April tenth, we apologize for that. So, once again, I start telling people in the neighborhood, hey, did you get a notification, did you get notification? No one, four families that I know of, there might be more, but as far as I know out of the families in my neighborhood, which is a big neighborhood, four families received envelopes for tonight's meeting. So we all get here tonight, and we're informed, thank heavens, at the beginning of the meeting, so that we don't get angry, that once again, oh, hey, no notification, we moved to meeting again. This is a huge concern for our neighborhood, we're being blocked out by only four families receiving notifications for an entire neighborhood on this huge project that's taking place affecting us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next, uh, one that I have signed up in advance is Chad Moyn, Means, Means. I almost thought it was Moyn, but I see the A now.
I've lived in my subdivision for twenty-one years, and I live one, one house off nineteen fifty west. Uh, in echoing Jen's concern, my concern is why we're not all residents of that subdivision informed of the first meeting that was already been held to approve the subdivision. No one knew about it. Didn't seem that it was very transparent to those who live here. What communication efforts were made for all residents of the affected subdivision? Where was the advertising for a zoning hearing for the public to attend? I didn't get one. The second thing, what traffic study was done? There is a reason for the speed bumps that are already on nineteen fifty west. I was a part of getting those put in because of the teenagers and some adults that were speeding down nineteen fifty. Will there be a couple more installed? If the street is extended? Or a roundabout to slow them down? Right where the enters our subdivision? What about going west to twenty-two hundred west? I see no plans on the map for that bridge to be put in across the canal. Should be put in there. Irregardless of whether nineteen fifty is opened up or not. And instead of nineteen fifty, that gives them more lots to build on, because they wouldn't even be going through nineteen fifty, they could just put another lot there, go straight west out onto twenty-two hundred. Number three, higher density to eight thousand square foot lots means more vehicles on the street. Both becoming, coming and going, but smaller lots mean more cars parked on the side of the street that is already narrow, probably planned for fifty foot wide, which is way too narrow. Maybe the city should kick in a few redevelopment funds to build the bridge over the canal to twenty-two hundred west, as per the plan. And then, number four, how are we gonna handle the construction traffic? Ie, cement trucks, delivery trucks, contractor employee parking that will cluster that little area with people because they're building fifty-five homes in there. So, again, I don't care who the builder is, it doesn't matter to me. But the density becomes a little denser, and, uh, I'm thankful that they opted to go with single-family homes, or we would really be upset. So, again, thank you for your time.
Thank you. You, that was the last person that I had who pre-filled out a little slip, but that doesn't mean you can't speak, if anybody else would like to address the council that is here in the room, go ahead and come on up. And, uh, we'll give you the same three minutes, just, we just don't know your name yet, so if you could give that to us. Oh. No, it's not his button, it's our button, there we go, now you're good.
Am I okay now? Okay, my name is Wes Jomet, I live on nineteen fifty west. Um, my main concern is if nineteen fifty is only gonna be the only access. It, right now, it's basically the only access coming in, I looked on the map, by my estimation, there's probably about a hundred and eighty homes right now that use nineteen fifty west as their sole access, and in our neighborhood, the access from Redwood Road probably doesn't serve a whole lot of homes, because it's kinda weird to get in that way anyway, because of all the curves and twists and turns. So if you build another fifty-five homes, and nineteen fifty west is the only one, either from north or south, I think it's gonna be very congested. I think I agree with Chad that there should be at least one other access into the neighborhood to try and cut down on it. Ideally, nineteen fifty west wouldn't be all the way going through, it would be another access road coming in from Gardener Lane, and then one coming in from twenty-two hundred west. And also, I agree that there needs to be more speed bumps. I live in the second house in off of, uh, Sugar Factory, and people turning off Sugar Factory, they're already going, I mean, only the second house in, and they're already going thirty miles an hour plus when they go past my house and coming out, it's the same thing. So that's my my, uh, issue is that there be a lot more access roads coming in. So nineteen fifty west isn't like a through street, and everybody's coming in there. I don't have little kids anymore, but a lot of people do, and, and people are speeding, anyway, that's all I had to say.
Thank you. Anyone else who'd like to, uh, address the council? Be a good time.
Hi, my name is Ted Slemaker, I am a West Jordan resident, um, I'm also a small business owner, um, so the main reason I'm actually here today is to see what I knew need to do about requesting a zoning change for my business. Um, part of what I'm wanting to try and do is basically change some of the ordinance to allow for tattoo shops in the manufacturing district that's just on Airport Road, um, I have an opportunity to get a building there, my, uh, my business was previously in Kerns, just off of sixty-two hundred south, so basically that same area. My, uh, most of my client base is within West Jordan and the Kerns area, so I'm just trying to keep the commerce here so that we can have our city be the successful ones. Um, I think that there's just been a, a little bit of an oversight with the, uh, regulations as far as manufacturing and flex spaces are concerned. Um, the property we're looking at is a flex space that has office space availability as well as a warehouse, now, the warehouse is utilizable for a lot of our other business purposes, we're multimedia artists, um, but I am primarily a body artist, so I'm, I'm asking for the basically, what the process is to make changes to the ordinance to allow tattoo shops in the M one zone on Airport Road.
Perfect, we will have a member of staff, in fact, he's standing up in the back right there with the blue shirt.
Perfect, um, yeah, and then the, um, let me see, so.
Still got a minute and a half if you want anything, by the way.
Oh yeah, Paul, um, is the one who sent us here, Paul Coats, so, um, yeah, I don't think he's here today, but, uh, yeah, essentially, we're just trying to do what we can to keep our business in this area, we have some opportunities in other parts of the city, we just don't like those areas, honestly, the landlord discrimination is a really big problem, um, one of the issues why we're asking for this ordinance change is because the two places where we are technically allowed to have body artists, um, are Jordan Landing and on the Redwood Road, um, inclusion. Um, we've checked with multiple landlords on the Redwood Road inclusion, one of them might be willing to lease to us, but without having the name tattoo in the business on, yeah, so it doesn't make much sense, not really advertising our actual name. Um, so, and the, uh, Jordan Landing one has several contracts in their current residence, uh, in their current lessees contracts that prohibit tattoos and body art from being in the same, uh, area, so while it's technically allowed by the city for us to be in Jordan Landing, they themselves do not allow us, and neither does most of the Redwood Road locations, so basically, I'm just requesting a change on that ordinance to allow us to operate here.
We're, we're clean, we do charity.
We're clean, we do charity all the time, it's, uh, it's a good time.
It's awesome. Awesome, okay, great, thank you so much. Yeah, Scott with the blue shirt right there. Um, that's, you know, we actually need to look at those kind of buildings are allowing all kinds of different things, and they're changing the way things are done in commercial and manufacturing zones, so thanks for bringing that up, I appreciate it, it gives me a lot of thoughts. Um, but yeah, talk to Scott, he's right there, he's waiting for you, anybody else who'd like to address the council? Yep, come on up, and just make sure you give us your name.
Yeah, my name is Daryl Moore, I also live on nineteen fifty west. I've been there for nineteen years, and addressing all their concerns was what I would I, I have a suggestion. Two access points for the new neighborhood, twenty-two hundred, wherever else off of Gardener Lane, make our street a dead end. That way, we don't have all the traffic going through to bypass twenty-two hundred west, because that's a big concern, as my neighbors have kids running around all day. I work out of my home, so I see it all day. So I'm really concerned about how much movement is gonna be going back and forth, back and forth. Currently, in our neighborhood, we only have two access points in and out of the neighborhood. And eighty-three hundred off of Redwood is, is a nightmare, because you have each dwelling has about four or five vehicles, either parked in the driveway or off the street, I've almost gotten hit on collision in my neighborhood, so that's gonna be an issue, so the more houses we have, the more cars are gonna be available. Kids are living with their parents till an older age, so they're gonna have their vehicles, the parents have their vehicles, recreation vehicles, um, not to diss my neighbor, but it's hard for me to back out of my own garage, because they have their vehicles parked, and I can't see what cars are coming, so it's just gonna be worse if we don't block that street, just make our street a dead end street. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, in the audience wanna address the council? Going once, going twice, okay, I'm not seeing anybody else, do we have anybody online?
Well, we have, uh, Council Chair, we have two online, um, Ms. Alexandra Aframo is online and desires to speak, and also, we have a phone number, no name attached, eight oh one seven five five six four nine nine, that has raised their hand.
Probably didn't need to give out the whole phone number, but that's cool, okay, let's go to, um, Ms. Aframo, if you wanna go ahead and unmute. Is she, uh, able to speak on the Zoom, she's unmuted? Unmuting is star six, by the way. Let me know when she's ready to go.
Uh, still waiting.
Give this a few more seconds here. Ms. Aframo, you should be able to unmute yourself, uh, with star six, and then you should be able to speak. We are excited to hear what you have to say. All right, let's go ahead and put her on hold and go to the, the other one. Let me know when that's ready to go. Sounds like we've got somebody there.
There you go.
All right, with the seven five five phone number?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yes, we can hear you.
Perfect, um, my name is Rachel Day, I am also a resident in the Parkport neighborhood, I live just right off of nineteen fifty, um, and I just wanted to add my voice to the very, very wonderful ones that came before, requesting that, um, nineteen fifty be dead-ended at the end of our neighborhood, but rather than made a through street through the new subdivision. Um, as others have pointed out, that would increase a lot of traffic, pose some safety risks for the kids in the neighborhood, and then there are some studies that show that there are increases of crime when there are more access points to neighborhoods via arterial streets. So, um, just wanted to kinda add my voice to that request as well, especially that that be honored during the construction process, so we don't have big trucks and, um, other construction materials moving through. And that's it.
All right, wonderful.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Yep, thank you for your comments, appreciate that. Uh, let's go back to Ms. Aframo, if you're there, uh, go ahead and star six to unmute, just push it one time. We can't hear you yet. Oh, I thought I heard something. No? How we doing?
Um, if you could just ask her to hit star six, I, I know, I'm pretty sure she can hear you, um, I'm.
Alexandra, it's star six to unmute. All right.
She is disconnected.
She's disconnected, okay, all right, well, we did try. Um, anybody else will give you one more chance in the room, anybody else in the room wanna address the council before we close the citizen comment period? All right, not seeing anybody ru, oh, go ahead, come on up. And give us your name, even though at least one of us knows who you are.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Bedore, and I would like to thank the council for, um, providing our community with, um, a theater, because it's something that I feel like, as the third largest city in the state, we needed to have a permanent home, so I just wanted to thank you from the bottom of my heart for making that happen.
Wonderful. We'll try not to count our chickens before they hatch there, but hey, the eggs are being laid, laid, so, you know, stuff is going on, all right, um, go ahead, come on up. Yeah, one more in the audience to address.
So, the, uh, new subdivision with the one.
Give us your name, real quick.
John Maddox.
Thanks, John.
So, the proposal is to maintain nineteen fifty all the way through. So the original plan was to have an exit going out to the west through the other field, whatever the master plan shows, right, y'all aware of that? My question is, I don't really wanna speak right now, if it can be post, because you're postponing this whole conversation to the twenty-fourth, so I'll be able to speak on the twenty-fourth? Okay, but speed bumps? So you know, we fought the speed bumps, I live on nineteen fifty. So the speed bumps, it humps, it were temporary, but it took us like three years to get them. I've been told that there's no, uh, design for speed humps in the new development, but Ivory Homes has to put them in every one of their subdivisions, so I was told, all of us were told, that the speed ups on nineteen fifty were temporary, but they've been there for, I think, roughly, I'd say almost twenty years now, and they're all holding up. So why can't we have speed bumps throughout nineteen fifty? Slow people down, because it's really not about adults or anything, it's all the kids that are playing. There's gonna be kids in the subdivision and everything, and the people that live in Raspberry Place right now, it will give them the opportunity just to go to the south, to Gardener Lane, right, that's Gardener Lane? You, so the people in the new subdivision with the speed humps, the chances of them going down nineteen fifty probably slim to none because of the speed humps, I think we need more. If you're not gonna put the exit onto twenty-two hundred, because where we live right now in Raspberry, if there's an exit to twenty-two hundred, we're gonna go into the new subdivision, and then out to the west, the people that live in the new subdivision that's proposed, why would they go down nineteen fifty? But when you guys ran all the tests, there are cars that were doing fifty-five, sixty miles an hour, we still have them doing that coming into the subdivision. We were told that the speed hump, we couldn't put it in, because it didn't meet the footage requirements coming off of Sugar Factory, didn't meet it. But I'm telling you, the cars that are coming in off of Sugar Factory are moving fast until they get to the first speed hump. The people in the new subdivision, what's gonna stop the people that are in Raspberry Place right now speeding through the new subdivision, which more than likely will have a bunch of children? Our subdivision is more everybody's older, so you don't have little infants running around, but that new subdivision more than likely will have.
That was, that was the three minutes, but, um, yeah, that was, it's a three minute time. Yeah, we will, uh, we will wait with bated breath. We got you. Understood.
Their speed humps to protect our children was kinda crazy, I mean, it was. But I do understand all the politics involved, right? You don't want the builder to pay for the road to connect to twenty-two hundred, which he should.
We got you, we got you, three, three minutes, we'll give you, we'll give you time in two weeks, uh, for three more minutes.
I'm glad, I'm go-
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it. All right, uh, anybody else, uh, in the room? Last minute, kinda going once, going twice.
A chair.
All right, yes.
Um, Ms. Aframo is back online and is unmuted right now.
And is unmuted and ready to go, go ahead, Alexandra.
Hi, oh, do you know, it breaks my heart, I'm ninety-one years old, I used to come to the I used to come to the council meetings every two weeks. I miss going there. But anyway, I want us to count our blessings. So let's give one minute for counting our blessings. We should all be thankful we live here in the USA. But I have a prayer I want to give you. It's called courage. Let me have the courage to believe in myself, not only on the days when I'm going great, but and nothing seems impossible, but on the days when the world looks lonely and I'm losing and the road ahead seems too hard. When I wonder if I'm brave enough, small enough, strong enough, don't let me quit. Let me have courage in myself. If no one else in the world cares or believes in me, let me have the courage to believe in myself. God loves you all. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Yep, you're still there. You still have a minute if you'd want.
Okay, God loves you all. I love you all. Happy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we'll go ahead and close citizen comments and move to the next item on the agenda, which is report to the city council. And we'll start with council reports. This is our opportunity to report on things we've been doing outside of this meeting. Councilmember Whitelock.
Thank you. I just want to take this opportunity to thank a few staff members. Parks Department, Events Department, the children always love what we call an Easter egg hunt. But when you observe it, I think it's just a dash for the, not the cash, but dash for those eggs. And if you don't get there in time, there's not parking. But they seem to enjoy it. So I'm going to thank those staff. Also, there is a training going on for our, our employees that Human Resources is doing. And oftentimes I listen to them and they're fantastic. And I just want to thank Human Resources for doing that because a few years back, we did some stuff with the retirement system for the employees. And with that, we said, well, we'd really like to ensure that training was done. And they did the retirement, but now they're doing these that, that are really informative. And, and I think it's really helping our employees to have a good grasp of what, what their life might look like when they're retired and how that's going to play out and just good budgeting. There's been just great. So thank you to staff for the good work that they're doing in those departments.
Councilmember Bloom.
I am very excited to be able to show up for the groundbreaking again. Well, I didn't show up the first time, but that was years ago, for the Art Center. That's my background, I, you know, as a theater kid. And obviously, my full time job is in the arts. And so for me, it's a very special moment, knowing how the arts when I was a child led to my career today. And I'm very happy that we are there for the groundbreaking.
Thank you. It was very cold. Councilmember Green.
It was cold. A couple of things. First, about the groundbreaking, for those of you that didn't know, we had some great support from a couple of our local legislators. It was good to see Senator Harper there and Representative Acton and supporting our community in that role. And so I want to publicly thank them. It was good that we finally got ground broken on that, that facility. And that will be a good thing. For those of you that missed the Easter egg dash, I think we need to just change it from Easter egg hunt to Easter. For those of you that haven't ever been to the city Easter egg hunt, it is the only city activity and Councilmember Bedore filmed it, so I can tell you. It is the only city activity that starts at nine o'clock and ends at nine oh one.
Yep.
And, and so, but to the event staff, that it was great. The event staff, by the way, if you didn't know this, set aside four or five bags of eggs so that some of us, Mayor, me, Councilmember Bedore, Councilmember Shelton, we could walk around and those that were late could still get something. So that was great. The other, the other thing that was really cool about this, and, and I was standing up near the, 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 whatever you want to call that, the Bowery, whatever. And a couple of parents specifically mentioned, and so Mayor, I don't know if you heard this, and I'll relate it to you and to the rest of the staff. They relayed specifically that they love our Easter egg hunt because we include the area underneath the, the Bowery for those with disabilities. And they love that. So we need to keep, continue to do that. That, that was great to see that. And so that, it was fun to be part of that event, so thank you. And I was supposed to go to the Association of Municipal Council meeting yesterday, and I have no idea what happened because my boss scheduled a meeting and I couldn't go.
Same with me. I'm sorry, I missed it too, out of meeting.
So I may go watch, go watch the video and I can report later, so thank you.
Awesome. Councilmember Bedore.
I wanted to echo some of the things that we've already heard, especially about the Easter egg free for all, really, again, not a hunt in any way, shape or form. But I have put on events much of my life and I was very impressed with the care that our events team put into that. As Councilmember Green said, to be able to take care of people who got there late because they had problems with parking or they just didn't think it was going to, you know, be that quick, to be able to take care of them was amazing. And I got to admit, I probably wouldn't have thought of that, at least not my first year of doing it. So the fact that the event staff did that, and I do believe we may be the only city that really has an ADA area for an Easter egg hunt like that. And if that's true, hooray for West Jordan and shame on other cities that aren't, you know, taking care of, of the young people that want to be included and probably haven't been included. I also wanted to be very grateful to have my very first, not only Easter egg thing, but my first shovel turn as a council member. It was very fun. It also involves something that was a big reason why I wanted to run. And if you want to talk about how slowly sometimes politics moves, the shovel that I use to turn the ground was dated twenty seventeen. So that's how long it's taken to finally get something right. And we need to stop that. And so I, I hope that we have much more good, timely shovel turnings in the future. Thank you.
Yeah, I was, I was still around back then, but that was, I think I'm the only one. All right. I, I did want to mention as well, I just came from the Jordan Valley Water Conservancy District before this meeting. And the, as part of that meeting, we approved a, the tentative financial plan budget in advance of getting the actual budget and approving the actual budget. But it includes a water rate increase. We're looking at, I think it's six point two percent for water rates in, for, that's our wholesale rate. Now, nobody panic. We've, we know those increases are coming every year, so we plan for that in our water rates as well. Not to say that it won't affect our water rates, but that's not the exact straight across number. So just so you know, for our staff, that, that is what's coming. The member agency meeting is, is coming up as well for that. So there's a heads up for you. Any other council? Okay, then we will go to the mayor, the council office report, excuse me, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Chair members of the city council. Just to update you a little bit on, as we go through more punch lists in this space. We have entered an order for signage, so a logo there on the blue wall behind you, a logo in the workroom, a logo that will be behind the receptionist area in the council office. And then something that's new that I'm really excited to have for the benefit of the residents is a city map with the districts that will be mounted outside the council off, our council chambers with your pictures and what district you represent. And it will show the, the districts of the city as they're currently laid out for the, till the next census. So that residents that are in City Hall and come up to the third floor can find who their representatives are. Also, it's tied in with, not, not directly, but it's also related to the Find My City Council Member app that's on our city website where you can type in your city address and get your local district representative. And it includes all three at large for every address since you represent every resident in the city. And that's something I think that's very unique for this city, that every resident is represented by a majority voice of the city council, three at large in their district. And so you'll see those changes as soon as those signs have come in and, and the, the folks that prepare those and get them mounted will have them up there. But try to be resident centric, which is one of the things that you asked us to do at the legislative retreat, to be resident centric. And so just trying to be mindful of residents so they know who to contact when they have, when they have issues. That's our report for tonight. Thank you, council.
Thank you. Let's go to the mayor's report, Mr. Burton.
Thanks, Chair. Okay, so we talked about how they were sealing the bricks and redoing the stucco and the blocks over there at the Justice Center. Now you'll notice the scaffolding is coming down and we are going to be doing some sealing on the senior center. And it'll be the same company. They probably won't need the scaffolding since it's not near as tall of a building, but we're doing that. So you'll see how that's starting up right away. Truck Ranch actually closed on their property. So that's what, that picture there is what it looked like yesterday.
You mean to say purchased?
Purchased, yes, they purchased, they closed on their purchase. They did not close the door. They opened the door. So we can really dig their work happening out there now. And everyone already talked about the Art Center groundbreaking, so there you are getting the scoop.
Notice the beanie, you know, some of us don't have the insulation on top.
Yes, that, that was one cool event. Okay, our city on April twenty seventh is going to have a Passport Palooza, meaning they're doing a special where people can come in and get their passports. And they don't even have to have an appointment. They can come in and do that. So it's a special day that we're putting out there where people can come in on a Saturday and get their passports. I'm having some open office hours, so if you or some, well, you can do it anytime. But if you know of someone that wants to meet with the mayor in person, invite him to come here to City Hall Tuesday, May second, four to six P M. We should have a few people showing up. And West Jordan Dumpster Day, our next one is going to be Saturday, May fourth, be with you. So that'll be a great opportunity for people who have larger size items or lots of things that their little trash dumpsters cans in their house won't handle. Come on down, no charge for West Jordan residents to bring their garbage. And last thing is, and you're all aware, of course, but next week is the Utah League of Cities and Towns Conference. And so a lot of us won't be around, will be there at that conference, learning some important things so we can do our jobs better. And I look forward to seeing all of, but one of you there. Now remember who the one is, I guess I'll see one over there. That is my report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I think everybody who's here will be there.
Can I ask one quick question? On the dumpster days, do you require I D. or do you just let people through?
Yes, we, we check their I D.
Okay.
But half the time we know them, so we don't check theirs. But yes, they should bring I D. with them. And if they're driving, they would have it anyway.
He's never checked my I D. I don't know why. I'll probably be making multiple trips, so. That'll be great. Let's go to the.
Like I said, if I know you, I won't check your I D.
Let's go to the city administration report, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want the police department to update you on a new program that they're starting that I think you'll be excited to hear about.
Thanks, Mr. Lee, Council, Council Chair. We are excited about our new program. It's called the Lights On Program. About six months ago, maybe a little longer, one of our officers, Sergeant Shoff, came to us and presented this idea of a program that he had heard. It allows for some enforcement alternatives for officers to enforce broken taillights or taillights out. Rather than issuing a citation or a fix it ticket, it allows us to provide them with a voucher to get the, the light fixed. It's partially funded by grant money. So since the idea came forward, we've been working to secure grant money, working with the Lights Off Program to get the vouchers and to set up our protocols and also working with local businesses. We feel like this is a good opportunity, not only for our businesses, it obviously supports the community and also supports our officers. It's a lot more fun for them to give a voucher to get it fixed rather than a citation. So we're going to publicly announce that program next week and just wanted to give you a heads up on the program. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those, but we are excited about it. It's a exciting public outreach endeavor for the police department.
That is awesome. Any questions for Chief?
Did I hear that the voucher is good for local businesses?
Correct, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure.
Our West Jordan businesses are, we reached out to to partner with that.
Excuse me, thank you. The blessings.
Thank you.
All right, anybody else from staff?
That's it. Thank you.
All right, wonderful, quick and, quick and painless. Next up, we have a special report from Chamber West. This is our, the Chamber of Commerce that the city is a member of. And we have Chamber West CEO and friend Barbara Riddle, who's not coming to the microphone.
Yeah, so I, I was, I was asked to do a little introduction and kind of talk about my, my experience with Chamber West. So my name is Mark Summers and I'm the Business Retention Manager for the city. So kind of in the trenches with them, so I've, I've had some experience working with them. So yeah, so we have Barbara Riddle here, who's the Chamber West CEO. She'll talk about herself some more and John Wilson, who is over West Jordan, who, who I work hand in hand with quite often. So yeah, in my past two years in my position, I've seen the engagement that Chamber West has had with the community. I have a regular monthly coordination meeting with their team for the betterment of our West Jordan businesses. We partner in business retention visits and coordinate any follow up needed. And I've, I've seen it beneficial, having a regional presence that covers four cities with similar demographics and similar business climates. It's been beneficial to our businesses to have more diverse networking opportunities. And just they, they all experience similar needs being on the west side. Yeah, so having Chamber West as a partner expands our opportunities as a city to serve and provide resources to our businesses. The various committees sponsored by the chamber address a variety of interests to businesses and provide a forum to voice suggestions or concerns. So I know, I know Barbara will explain a little further about what they're doing and all the involvements and the many, many things that they have going on. But I've personally seen many of the benefits. Probably the, the best example that I can think of that I've been involved with is the Business Success Series. That's been great to help smaller businesses kind of understand some of the niches or the intricacies of operating a, a small business. And as with all their other meetings, they are open to members and non-members, so the whole community as a whole. And as with any available resource, the benefits are correlated to participation. And I believe that there are ample resources through the chamber that promote business success should they decide to take advantage of it. So that, that's all I have, so I'll turn it over to Barbara now.
Gosh, thanks, Mark. That was absolutely amazing. There's a few things I can check off my list now. Good evening, Council Chair Jacob and council members. I'm so excited to be here today and it's nice to, to be able to come before you at least once a year and provide an update on what the chamber is doing and our activities. And I'm going to try and move through this rather quickly so that we won't take a lot of your time because I know you're, you've got a lot on your calendar tonight. So our mission, enhancing the business community through connections, promotion, advocacy and empowering our local business. You guys probably all have this up on your screen. Meeting the staff, a lot of you have had an opportunity to meet a lot of our folks. Connie Bailey's been with us for over thirty years. John Wilson, his territory is West Jordan. Monica Gayden is another one. Wilson his territory is West Jordan Monica Gayden is another one of our business development directors and also over our events and she's doing a fabulous job and our additional staff support is our graphic designer who does phenomenal amount of work and Evan Bowerley who works with us from Visit Salt Lake. Our Chamber West is a catalyst for business growth a convener of leaders and influencers and a champion for a stronger community and you can see the five core competencies of what we work on to really grow and strengthen our businesses and our footprint I believe a strong chamber within a community is makes for a very strong community. All right I'm pushing the pointer button not the advance button our leadership within the chamber we have a lot of volunteers for staff but the amount of work that we do is really because of the number of business volunteers that we have engaged our board of directors is our policy governance board we have 21 members on that and serving on that is council member Chad Lamb currently council member Jacob has served on it Lamb has served on it before and we had McConaughey once before that as well they meet on the even months of the year on the odd months of the year our board of governors meets this is an opportunity for pay to play for our larger businesses who want to come together sit together and and talk strategy and to advise our board of directors and our staff on maybe some of the big picture issues and serving on that is Mayor Dirk Burton council member Chad Lamb and Paul Coats and we really appreciate their participation that particular agenda includes kind of a deep dive topic that the board make the determination of what they want to hear about and you can see kind of the topics that that we've kind of jumped into and Great Salt Lake updates legislative affairs reviews air quality initiatives the China intelligence briefing and the others are all listed and it goes back about a year just to give you a flavor for what the board of governors is talking about. Our Legislative Affairs Committee is probably our second most powerful committee within the chamber and we just had a chamber leadership or a leadership change in that committee between Corey Holdaway and Stephen Smith but they meet monthly April through December and kind of deep dive into policy issues and then during the legislative session because they like meeting so often they meet twice a week once up at the state capitol with our legislators to talk about policy and bills that we know are gonna impact our businesses this has been not just a pro or a reactive committee but they've actually become proactive we did a catalytic converter bill a couple of years ago and this year we focused on a criminal offense enhancement amendments bill to really enhance penalties towards criminals who maybe still trailers and cause our businesses not to be able to fulfill contracts and it's not just a small petty theft it's a big theft that impacts business and it's important that that's treated differently there are nine subcommittees within that organization or within that committee air quality business government relations economic development business sustainability education workforce development healthcare housing tax reform transportation and water conservation and development serving on that board we have Zach Jacob and we have Mayor Burton as well and Paul Coats also attends when he's available our our Leadership Institute is a 10-month program really geared to help develop current and future leaders within our community both within their organizations as well as in the greater community and you can see the 10 session topics part of that is learning about community service public service local government strategic planning in fact tomorrow we are doing our local government and we'll have a panel of mayors speaking to this group and a panel of council members and speaking to the group as well as our chiefs of police so that'll be an exciting topic tomorrow. Our professional development series is really our monthly luncheons and they're held every other month and and it's really that that committee as they determine who they attract to speak at that event is really who would you like to have lunch with and what would you learn from them and it's been really powerful and you can see some of the topics over the last 12 months that that they've deep dived into and Mark mentioned our Business Success Series this is geared more towards the smaller businesses and a more of a tactical of how do I do X Y or Z within my business whether it's marketing if it sells if it's cybersecurity they've had all kinds of different topics and you can see those noted. Our women in business are killing it right now they have a professional growth series luncheon every other month it's on the off months of the professional development series they just held their spring conference yesterday we had almost 200 people in attendance and we actually did a panel with our female legislators every one of our six female legislators from our footprint participated in that panel and that was really powerful our women's golf clinic comes up on May 15th and then of course they deep dive into some community service opportunities and then we have a golf nine and dine event in September that's coming up. Our ambassadors are our blue coats that go out and and cut ribbons and help with groundbreakings and you can see they've been very busy and the pictures from all of those from the West Jordan footprint they also work with us on business outreach kind of as an extension of staff and they are over our Friday Connections event which is next and our Friday Connections is really that business to business and then most of our small businesses really love that we we partner with several other chambers as well to expand those connections it's the third Friday of every month and it's really a way to help them kind of speed network and they move around from table to table and they walk away with all kinds of new contacts to help them grow their business. Our job fair is coming up on April 30th anyone that's a member of the chamber gets a complimentary table and if you're not you can tap in you just have to pay a little bit for that but we do it in collaboration with the Jordan School District the Granite School District Salt Lake Community College and the Utah Department of Workforce Services and it's not just about placing somebody today but it gives an opportunity for those kids to meet some of those business leaders and maybe find a career that they didn't even know existed and to develop an opportunity to to for a mentor or you know to kind of decide I'm gonna go into this field because I met somebody and I liked him and I like that kind of work and now I know what I need to do from an educational standpoint and I'll see them at the next job fair as I continue to go through school and graduate. We had our annual membership breakfast meeting in January it's really our opportunity to transition our board of director leadership positions and then recognizing our board of directors but also all of our committee chairs and really the programs that they are running within their committees and we do that at the Veridian Event Center and they do a really job taking care of us and this was our second annual event. Our annual golf classic we have 180 plus golfers we use 27 holes it's quite the event tracks most of our businesses and it's coming up on June 12th and it's 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 a great event and we usually have the mayor out shaking hands and saying hi to everybody and making sure they're gonna have a great day. Our annual awards gala is on August 28th this is where we honor our Hall of Fame award winner and along with four different other award categories where we recognize three finalists in each because we want to share the love out with as many businesses as we can and this is actually gonna be held at the Veridian Event Center for the first time we've always been at the Maverick Center so it's gonna be fun and it's nice to be able to move it around. Our Fall Conference is on November 13th business conference two keynotes six breakout topics and you can see the rest but we'll expect 150 to 200 to that as well. Additional opportunities we work with manufacturing meetings and tours in partnership with Impact Utah economic development from West Jordan City also participates with that we also have a multi-chamber Washington DC trip in May that we're participating in and we have a international trip to Portugal for our members as well in October. Something brand new in fact I haven't even announced it to our chamber members so don't tell anybody this isn't a public meeting right we have a new 401k close plan that we're gonna be announcing soon expecting in May and it's gonna make a 401k opportunity available to small business and take away some of the costs or fiduciary responsibilities so that it makes it a lot more feasible for them to participate in a 401k to help them retain their their employees and then just overall benefits information I'll just hit the highlights you've got all this information in your packet but being part of a chamber provides networking opportunities there's visibility and credibility for a business the chamber does a lot around advocacy and representation in fact I just had a business send me an email today really frustrated with something going on in the city and I knew exactly who to forward it to and so I'm sure he'll he'll get some follow-up and then access to resources and support to help them grow their business marketing and promotion community involvement information and insights and then of course we do certificates of origin and we do a lot through social media digital if you're not friends with us be friends with us because we're kind of fun people and then you can see what our website is so this is a list of our our bigger companies that are engaged in our chamber called our civic community leaders and our and our cities as well and with that I'm happy to answer any questions and I appreciate the opportunity to provide an update.
Thank you for being here any questions or comments or constructive feedback no I'm just kidding council member Whitelock.
First I want to thank you for what you do it's always fun to participate in the in the ribbon cuttings to see those new businesses come in fact the quilting one I just saw an ad on the TV for them so I was like that's kind of cool but there's also a question that I have when we did your last contract we included days that you could use the building and the reason we did that was so that you would hold and meet the candidates and I need you to know that I was very disappointed that you didn't provide that service to the city because I felt like that was part of what the contract was when we added the days of using the building for free so I just need you to know that I think that service should have been rendered so.
And I appreciate the comment and let me explain why we didn't is we offered to to moderate and come and host it that night but we felt like the city was in a much better position to promote it out to their members or out to their residents so we were very willing to come and help and support but we just didn't feel like we had the reach directly to the to the residents and that's why councilwoman.
Thank you that is not what I was informed of thank you.
Okay.
Perfect any other questions or anything all right well thank you good to see you again.
It's good to see you all thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks for being here. And now we'll get to the fun the lack of the less fun parts let's put it that way I don't want to disparage anybody I'm gonna go to the business items on the agenda the first business item is 5A on the agenda this is ordinance 2416 amending the West Jordan City Code section 63B1 and 63C5 addressing animal impound duration licensing renewal and this is going to Dan each old Dan come on up.
Thank you Chair and Council the first amendment before you this evening addresses the change that's needed in section 6-3B-1 of the Western Municipal Code regarding the duration of the time the animals are impounded at the animal shelter this update that is needed brings us into compliance with state code 11-46-103 they require stray animals to be impounded for a minimum of five business days before a disposition can be determined for that animal the city already operates under this five day period but we need to bring the the code into compliance with what we're doing operationally already. The second amendment before you is proposed to change section 6-3C-5 with a request to begin renewing pet licenses annually on the date of the from the date of licensure instead of from the end of each calendar year this changes come about because our staff has recently taken on the responsibility of all pet licensing where that task used to be shared with customer service and in city hall and so it's put quite a burden on the staff in the beginning months of the year to be able to handle all the renewals being mailed out processing all the licenses in person as well and then also even when people use the online portal we have to issue those tags as well so the benefits of changing to an annual license would spread out that workload over the year year and that would continue to spread out as time goes on and it would also increase the time licenses last for each resident with a paraded schedule that we have currently we have residents who will come and license their pets in December and it's paraded to no cost at that point and they're asking if they can just purchase the license for the next year we're not able to do that so it would resolve that problem as well to just issue that license anytime someone comes in and make it last a year and there may be a small increase that we see from this change because there are people who are mandated to license either through a court proceeding or through an impoundment of their animal at the shelter and in the past they have seen a paraded fee and some of those people are the ones that don't renew their their pet license we see when it's done by force and we would at least be able to capture that full license fee and make it last for a year from from that time period so I thank you for your consideration in these matters and I'm here to answer any questions you may have regarding this.
Questions council member Green. So this isn't it's part of the ordinance now and I'm going to ask a couple of questions in specific it currently in 63B1 in in our lines it's lines nine through 16 and I'm particularly talking about line 11 it talks about applications have to be submitted to animal control using a standardized form are we still using a form or I thought we had online software to do that?
We do it's a forum that's filled out online but we do not have a paper form that someone fills out would be correct.
Do we need the reference to that in the code that said that says that you utilize a standard form do we need that in the code?
No that language would not be necessary.
Okay thank you. Any other questions for the staff?
Just a clarification that's something but right now most people have their license January correct?
Correct.
So we're only really affecting this parade through of new things we're still gonna have a lot of people set up at a different time I just wanted to make sure that that was that is what we were looking at just the new.
That's correct and the hope is just over the years that that will continue to spread out.
This isn't an immediate sort of thing I just wanted to make sure I thanks.
Yep.
That was my question.
All right let's go to council member Lamb was next.
So I have a quick question about payments so I just renewed my dog licenses I have two so I am a good citizen because I license my dogs and.
What about your ducks?
Well that's not.
That's later on the agenda.
This might not be a question for you it might be more for mayor and for the city staff I used to be able to come to city hall and pay my license fee here now I can't anymore I either have to mail it in or go clear out to the west side which is where I don't live so city staff is there a way and I don't need an answer today that we can make payments available here at city hall rather than people having to go clear out to the west side if they don't live out there so just just food for thought this really isn't geared toward you it's more geared towards something that would be making it easier for people to pay it here at city hall because it was available previous.
Mayor do you have a do you have two cents?
Well Dan has.
I can speak to that partially so we do have a software program that tracks all the licenses which is used at the shelter so I mean it's possible that it could be they would have to use our software at the other location there is a cost per workstation that that software is on so it would be an increasing cost to provide a licensing there but it could be done if the city was willing to pay that extra amount.
Perfect.
Just food for thought because it was available previously now it isn't so and like I said I do pay my bills for my dogs so I know it worked before.
Yes we wish it was because we do hear a lot of complaints from people who go to city hall first thinking they can still do that.
Council member Whitelock.
Well first I thank you for paying your fees council member Lamb and sometimes you have to come to the west side it's okay we have to come to the east side for this meeting it'll be okay. I have a question for you so if normally council member Lamb is dutiful and he pays it in January but next year his kid graduates and life is crazy and he doesn't come in until March then does he get a penalty or will we just start them at March?
If it is late there would be the penalty in place at that point. If it is late, there would be the penalty in place at that point.
Okay. That's interesting. So, so do you think that that decreases compliance in registering and licensing your pet?
It's possible at times.
Thank you.
Councilmember Green. Councilmember Bedore and Councilmember Lamb got me thinking on two questions. So my first question, and it's more for thought in the future. But if we have the software and those kinds of things, why can't we just pay for the things online? And why do we have to go someplace and actually pay for them? And so to me, if we have online software, we ought to be able to connect it to some sort of payment and just pay it. I mean, if Amazon can do it, West Jordan City can do it. But the, the, the question that I had that Councilmember Bedore got me thinking is what, why not? And, and I'm willing to, to look at something to, to help quote unquote subsidize this. But right now, what we're doing is we're just saying for future dog owners, and we're not fixing your problem for next January because you're just going to still have all the work. Because 90% of the dog licenses are going to be due in January. So my question is, with the implementation of this, can, can we, could we look at doing something to say what we're going to do is, for example, those with licenses that the pet owner's last name ends up in E through J or E through K, they get, they get a freebie until second quarter next year. Because you know, you're, you do the, you know, break that up by alphabet and have an implementation plan. So that going into next year, plus the new ones we're picking up, you can do that as opposed to, because if 90% of the licenses are due in January, we're not solving the problem that you're talking about by just changing the ordinance. We got to do something by, by spreading those licenses out with those renewals. And I'm wondering if there isn't a way that we can do that. And if we need to do that as a council to, to shift, you know, to cover whatever few thousand dollars that we're going to be missing for some dog licenses for six months or something. Do we need to cover that as in the transitions? That's my thought going into further discussion.
If you make this change, then that option, it would be available if they choose to do that. Because then they would be required to do them all at one time anyway. So we could make that change.
But would it cost money with any details?
Yes, if we did it that way, but we could look at different ways to do it if we wanted to do that. But we'll just look at it and see because those, the real problem is not everyone just in January. The real problem is doing all the prorations and that. This will make it easier, even if it's all the same month. And going forward, that number will not continue to increase. It'll be where it is. And so we're not creating a real problem.
Wonderful. Yeah, I have a lot of questions, but they're all administrative about like how you implement and what the, you know, how you do the fees and what, what exactly you're paying for. What happens when somebody's license expires? Are they expunged from the system or do they, could you still cull in and find your dog if they ran away? I mean, all those, whatever, those aren't germane necessarily to this business item though. Any other questions or comments or discussion?
I, I do think that there is something to what Councilmember Green had said and something we can look at. But if we get this going now, then that really doesn't come up until the end of next year. And it gives us some time to think about it. But I do think there are some things that we need to change. I'm, I'm for what we have now, but I do think that there's improvements we can make going into the next year. Especially we are in an age of online now. It seems like we've got to be able to take care of that.
Wonderful. I'll just say there's lots of things that Amazon can do that we can't do. Just, just saying. Anyway, any other discussion, comments, questions, motions? Well, there, there, I've got a couple of concerns. And, and they're not with the change. Specifically, you know, do we need the wording in about the form in the one section? But particularly in 63, 63C5, there's a couple, there's a couple, this, this was changed. I mean, when you look at it, some of this was changed in 2021 with the form of government. I don't know what was changed in 19 and what was changed in 2009. But there is some very poor wording here. First one I'll point out so that I can beat Councilmember Bloom and Councilmember Whitelock to the punch. But we refer to gender in here, his, her, she. And the goal of this council is to remove gender from the ordinances. And, and so I have a concern there. I have a concern in, in a section where it says that the animals may not be redeemed. And I'm wondering if that shouldn't be animals may not be released. And then I have a concern on if there, there's, there's some stuff about discretion of animal control officer. And I think that there may be better wording there. And then the last one is it says notice shall be deemed given when sent or posted. Well, notice was, notice was given when it was sent or posted. I think that line means notice is presumed received. And, and so, and, and then the interesting thing in that line is, is that it says notice is given to the last known address of the listed owner. What happens if there's no owner listed, but we know where the owner is? So the, the only if you, if the, the implied statement of that is, is that we only have to give notice to a listed owner. And it doesn't mean that we have to give any attempt to a non-listed owner. So in that particular section, as we're looking at this, I get that we need to bring this into state law, but I would, and by the way, line seven through 17, that's like two sentences in 11 lines. I think we could clean that up, but I'm not worried as much about that as a couple of the other substantive things. And so I, 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 I'm willing to make the change, but I also want to clean this up when we're making changes and not just continually make a, oh, well, we need to clean this line up. And then, oh, let's clean that line up and then let's clean this line up. If we're looking at a chapter, let's clean the chapter up. That's, that's, that's my thought. And so, and it, it's the same with the other one on the, the, the annual licensing. I think we could clean up the standard form stuff. And, and by the way, there's also some contradictory stuff in the language. It says rabies vaccinations must be given by an authorized provider. But an authorized provider is never defined. But in another section, a little bit later, it says that the baby, rabies vaccine, vaccination has to be done by a veterinarian. So when, when you do legislative drafting, if you change the word, it means that you changed the meaning and there's something intent behind that. So does that mean that we changed the intent in this one? Or do we really want a veterinarian? And I think we need to be consistent. So personally, I would rather postpone this until we can clean a couple of these things up and get, get it better. But that's me.
Councilmember Lamb.
I'm going to make a motion. I would like to move to approve ordinance number 2416, amending Section 63B1 and 63C5 as noted.
Second.
Great. We have a motion by Councilmember Lamb to approve, seconded by Councilmember Bedore. Discussion to the motion.
Since so late, then we just have.
So the.
Bogus ordinance or?
Who has the floor?
Sorry, Councilmember Green has the floor. Discussion to the motion.
I, I, I'm just wondering, so then we just, we pass the change and then we just say, okay, we're going to change this again sometime when we get around to it. So.
So the motion brought before us was to change those two, not to change the whole thing. I would say let's move forward with those changes that we agree on tonight. And if you would like to bring it back to make those changes, we can discuss that and do that.
Councilmember Bloom.
I agree with both of you. I do want to get this changed. I want to get the wording fixed that you brought up, the concerns, especially with the gender and some of the cleanup on here. And some of the sentences don't even make sense. But I would like to approve these changes so you can get started on that right away. And then I would be willing to sponsor with you to come back and fix the rest of it.
Councilmember Whitelock.
Thank you. And I, I just echo that. I, I think we've said more than once that when we're updating first changes in state code, we want to look at the whole thing. So I'm just going to ask again that we don't just fix these little problems. It's a problem I've had since I was first elected. We changed form of government. All we wanted to do was look at changing the mayor's name and this name. It's inefficient. So please, when it goes through legal, please look at it as a whole, not just with laser vision on these few changes that we legally have to make. So I will vote yes tonight, but I may not on a future one because it seems to keep happening. So that's not really your issue, Dan, but it is an issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion before mine? All right. I don't know that it's really pertaining to the motion. So actually I'm going to leave it. I'm in favor of the motion. Seeing all the discussion, no more discussion. We'll go to a vote.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Thank you. I show that motion passes six to zero.
Perfect. Thank you. Let's move on to item 5B on the, on the agenda. This is ordinance 2419, amending West Jordan City Code Title II, Executive Branch Committees. Mr. Anderson.
One second, just as a.
Councilmember Green.
Cindy, when you put that up on the screen, as it went away, it showed red failed.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Thanks for checking on that. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Council. You, we had discussed, the council had discussed, I get my screen up here. The Title II amendments, the council gave direction in three different committee of the holes. Those dates were November 8th, February 21st, March 27th. Really deleting a lot of the code, allowing the mayor to create the executive committees, not statutory, but the executive committees by executive order, defining terms, membership, voting, purpose, those type of things by executive order. The statutory committees still go through advice and consent. That would be like Planning Commission Board of Adjustments. They would go through advice and consent of the council. There's no restrictions on council committees. That's done in a separate section of code. And you had asked at the last work session on March 27th to bring it back in its entirety. So this, the RCA mentions each section, what changes have been made in its entirety. And so it's before you tonight for a potential adoption.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Any discussion, any motions? Any thoughts whatsoever? Councilmember Green.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still trying to figure out why. And this is line 422 through 426 in the red line. Thank you. Thank you. It, it, in paragraph C, it says, "The Board of Building Appeals shall consist of five members appointed by the mayor with advice and consent of the city council, board members." Why do we refer to the five members with the advice in the city council when it is in another section up above when we replace it? Because in, on line, line 329, it already said, "The mayor shall appoint with the vice and consent of the city council, five qualified persons to be regular members of the board adjustment and one additional member to be qualified as an alternate, alternate." But then when you get down to line 417, it doesn't allow for the alternate. And then it, and it, and it just, it reiterates what was in the title two and I'm, so I'm confused. So I, I think to make this consistent, we need to drop lines 422, the, the first part of 422 and 423. It's that first sentence. And if we drop that first sentence, I'd be okay with passing that. But that's just redundant, but it, it conflicts with what's already there. Because it says we point five plus an alternate. And then this one says you only appoint five. So yeah, there, there's that conflict that I think that we need to be careful with in, in that two, in Section 244. So that's, that's my suggestion. And if we have a motion, I'd move it, but I'll talk about that in a minute.
Okay. Question real quick regarding that for staff. Is the Board of Building Appeals and the Board of Adjustment the same board? Because you said the Board of Adjustment says this, and then you cited the Board of Building Appeals in the second section.
Both were built, both, both sections that I quoted here.
No, 329 is under Board of Adjustment. Let's go to Councilmember Bloom.
Okay, never mind. Then that clears that up. But I was going to say, an alternate is not actually a board member. They're the alternate anyways. So in my mind, even if that was the same group, it wouldn't have made a difference in my mind and we would have been fine to keep that.
All right. I can't read. So thank you.
No worries. Any other discussion on this? Not seeing any discussion. If anybody wants to move. Councilmember Bloom.
Can I make a motion? All right. I move to approve ordinance number 24-19, amending West Jordan City Code Title II, Executive Branch Committees.
Second.
Wonderful. We have a motion by Councilmember Bloom, seconded by Councilmember Lamb. Discussion to the motion to approve. Seeing none, let's vote on this one.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes six to zero.
All right, moving on. Business item 5C is ordinance 24-04. Back to the future, amending West Jordan City Code Title I, Chapter Eight, municipal administration, including departments. Mr. Anderson again.
Thank you, Council. This item has also been in a couple committee of the whole work sessions as we discussed. All of the Title I amendments that we've done, there was a section, or sorry, Chapter 46, 46, nine and 15, I think that were adopted last meeting. This is the last section of Title I, Chapter Eight, which is administrative departments. This was cleaned up a lot to reflect current operating procedures that the council has approved with the budgets about a year ago or so, when you approve the budget for public services to work with the parks and cemetery and public utilities to kind of separate the utility departments out of public work so that they could function a little bit independently and provide that data to the city council. The RCA, the Request for Council Action in the Packet reflects all the changes, a lot of deletions. It's very simplified and allows them to do their basic responsibilities under the direction of the mayor and the chief administrative officer and his assistants. If you have any questions, Mr. Boyce is here, Mr. Chandler, Mr. Lee and the mayor can answer those questions. It mainly affects the executive branch, not the legislative branch.
Perfect. Any questions for staff on, on this one? Questions, clarifications, thoughts, pontifications or ponderings? Councilmember Bloom.
I just want to say thank you for your hard work on it. It looks really nice.
I'm going. I second that motion. Councilmember Green.
I've looked at the, geez, I'm looking at the wrong line on the, the stuff. I move to approve ordinance 24-04.
Okay, we have a motion. I got you.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Bloom. Any discussion to the motion to approve? All right, seeing no discussion, let's vote on this one.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore? Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock? Councilmember Bloom? Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes six to zero.
Thank you so much. We got one more. This is item, business item five D, ordinance twenty four ten, amending the West Jordan City Code Title Six, Chapter Three, Article E. The other ones had them all dashed. This one spells it out. That's kind of fun. Ownership and Maintenance of Fowl Things. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you, counsel. This has been to a several committee of the whole work sessions. Again, it began November eighth, twenty twenty three, so it's been a while. Councilmembers discussed amendments to the definition of foul, to specify prohibitive fowl such as geese, turkeys, peafowl, roosters, and expanding the definition of permitted foul. The council consensus that we received was to revise the definition to include permitted foul in residential zones. Staff, the staff, including the council staff have worked with Mr. Etchell. Regarding the size limits, different breeds, the number of permitted foul, there was input also sought by Mr. Davenport, who's the Director of Public Utilities in order that we comply with EPA standards for our discharge permits. And the Utah Department of Environmental, it says Greg here, environmental quality. Thank you. Related to E, E. coli contamination of city waterways. There's other cities that have waterways that have had ducks, for instance, that needed to do some cleanup because it affected the waterway. So we do have to have some compliance with the discharge permits. And Mr. Davenport's here to answer any questions you might have about that. The fiscal note is there may be an increase in fee collections based on the permits issued for domesticated foul. The code was initially drafted by Councilmember Green. His work was very much appreciated. City Attorney's Office worked with Councilmember Green's original proposal. And some of the suggestions provided by Councilmember Green are incorporated in the draft code that is attached to this packet. And that's what's presented to you this evening for your potential approval.
Thank you. Any questions for staff, comments, pontifications? Councilmember Green? I have first one question, since you're sitting back there in the cheap seats, Mr. Etchell. Are you, are you okay with the wording of the way this ordinance is worded? He, he's nodding. You don't have to come up. Hey, we can, we can, for the record, say that he said it was okay. Just, just a couple of things that I wanted to say. Thanks to the City Attorney's Office for, for working on this. It went back and forth a couple of times, but I think we've got some really good wording here. I'm still concerned that the duck or that the, the foul ordinance is licensed in business licensing. And so, Mayor, I think we need to take a look. We made it generic in this one that says that the city, that you do it with, through the city, and we don't have to do it through any division. But we, we got to look and see, it just doesn't seem right that we, we license birds through the business licenses, but we license dogs and cats differently. And maybe we can bring that all into some sort of consistent process at some point in time. Just as a comment for everybody, I did talk to the resident from District Four who actually started, who actually wanted some of this, this ordinance. I, I, I talked to her last night and told her that it was, it was coming before the council. She told, she was on the, when I was on the phone, she said, well, I'd love to attend, but I'm on our farm in California where I brought the ducks. And she goes, I'm looking forward to bringing the ducks back home. So she, she's looking forward to bringing her couple of ducks back to West Jordan from California. So I just thought I, I, I don't know. Anyway, so she was extremely happy that the, that she was going to be able to bring her ducks home from California. Councilmember Bloom?
I have to say, reporting back from the backyard enthusiasts of foul, they are very excited for some of these changes. I'm in those groups, by the way. I, I, I still am a little iffy on some of the wording in twenty, between twenty one and twenty six in the clean version because I feel like it's a little bit of a nanny wording. Because I don't know when I clean my coops. I clean it when it's ready to be cleaned. I don't pay attention to what month it is. So that's just my little, I want on record. And then there's other things like, you know, some people do different litter methods that they don't have to clean every two weeks, but the deep litter method, so just FYI. But other than that, I'm very positive. It's a move in the right direction. And I'm excited for our residents to have more options in their backyard chickens and fowls and whatnot.
You can get diapers for your ducks and chickens.
Yes, you can. I know.
Well, I, I just think, I find it really funny that we need to have a, we need to regulate the discharge of ducks. When guess what, guys? Ducks are everywhere. And guess what? They don't care where they discharge. And I think it's just, I think it's just gonna, yeah, exactly. You park by the lake. Councilmember Bedore?
Just a quick point out, and a thank you to the mayor. I know it's been killing you to not be able to make puns during this entire little, little talk. And I know in your head you're doing it, but I just want to thank you that you've, you've, you know, kept it shut.
Councilmember Green? Can I move to approve ordinance twenty four dash ten? Yes, we have a motion to approve by Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Whitelock. Any discussion to the motion? I'll just speak on behalf of Chandler Bing and Joey Tribbiani. I'm in favor of the motion. If you know, you know. All right, seeing no further discussion, let's go to a vote.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes six to zero.
Now you can have your duck and eat it too. Never mind.
I have a wild duck. I don't need to permit.
Okay, next item up is the consent items, just approving the minutes from March twentieth. Move to approve consent items. Okay, a motion to approve by Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Whitelock. Discussion to the motion on the minutes. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. All right. And just quickly before we adjourn, I'll note that on the agenda is that R one eight rezone that several residents spoke about. No, this is a different one. This is a different one. This one's at seventy two eighteen South Temple Drive. Just so you know, that is coming up, a different R one eight rezone. Because we love R one eight rezones. All right. That's the one with the veterinary hospital. Yeah. Yeah. All right. Anything else before we adjourn this meeting? All right, seeing no further items on this meeting, we'll go ahead and call this adjourned and we'll convene shortly a committee of the whole in the conference room. Ready?
We got one, two, three. You're coming in, right?
All right, we'll call the committee of the whole meeting to order. All six council members that are in this state are present. Councilmembers traveling somewhere far, far away. And we're going to talk about liquor stores. I think, right?
Yep. I, I will do so. I'm excited.